We're in Chapter 3 of the Valley.
Okay.
The Invis Police Department.
Who's "we"?
Building Inspector.
Oh.
We just follow that. And we install your label. We're very patient people, okay?
So you're the owner of the property?
This one should be good.
I'll take what you got. This is small. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong. The check's for $240, $250?
Your fee schedule is $125 per new lot.
Should we get another $125 out again? Another $125. There's three lots. So it's $100. What's that?
The way it was explained, they checked with the... I think she said it was $250 because of the existing land, or the reigning land.
But it still has to be re-registered. Basically, it's $125 per new lot. It's not... I know it's all pre-existing, or that... prior to being subdivided, but now, five, three lots have to be registered. So she was incorrect. It's $125. You got cash? I'm only kidding. Just stop down in town... No, we don't need it tonight. Just stop down in Town Hall and write the other check, that's all. I was just kidding. You're all set.
And I think that's the... Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Keep the plastic on the side.
What's that? Oh, wait, hang on a second. Did you get the... You got your MyLAR sign, right? And we got the one on the floor? Yeah, we're all set. Okay. Still, nobody's here. I think I know what he's trying to do, but I push that off in case he does show up. Let's go to Pioneer Valley.
Good evening, my name is... I'm from Montez. I'm from Pioneer, Chapter 3 of NAFTA. I'm from the Board of Directors. So we've applied to update our plans, signs, and everything else. For the condition of there still being over 500 lighters, it's really very great floodlights and not very functional in the city. So we've decided to invest in better quality signs ahead of time. And at the same time, we've had a conversation with the police chief, who's spoken in private about wanting a new partnership and coming up with memorabilia in the county. Because, I'll go back without thinking, my notes were probably better than 750,000 cars a year going flooding down that street. It was a good place if you had a public emergency and animal, or a missing senior, severe weather, things like that, we would be willing to partner and draft a memorandum of standing to allow the police department to call our point of contact and say, "We've got a missing teen, or we've got a missing juvenile, or we're looking for this car because of the tragic accident." And we get that to flash in a sign at some rate or there. The new sign allows us to do that for more than a go-kart machine to ride with itself and so forth. The other view of the sign is that the illumination is much more near-friendly. Although it's clear to see, because obviously the quality of the digital board, it's much softer to the... the light will even want a bar that would see it. It's much more soft. So it's not as annoying having those lights on. What we're looking to do is to update that sign.
So you want to do an internally illuminated sign?
If you might, if I step up by a bit.
Yep. An internally illuminated sign?
Yes.
With scrolling messages?
Well, scrolling, not necessarily scrolling, but changing periodically. We change the message on the board once a month. It says, "If you go by a little bit, we'll go," something different. We advertise, like our show, "Forgive my appearance, it's been a big heat since 6th of this morning." We advertise the upcoming show. We advertise memberships. We put out messages that are community-friendly. We'll put out things like "A charter date is coming." We put signs, you know, "Be sure, Mark and Callan are..." "Grandy Town Charter Date is coming," things like that. But it won't be constantly scrolling, like on advertising board. We're looking at specific signage that would stay on there for a period of time. And then again, unless there's some type of policy safety emergency, at that point, the chief, or our chief of order, in turn, would need to... They would talk to our folks at the Hales, and we've got a problem for... We've got a massive storm coming. And we remind people this week, slow down your speed. And we would be happy to do things like that. Our goal with all of this was to invest in becoming more community-friendly and better partnerships with the county. I mean, we've been here forever. You know, obviously, the town bar, the whole building, and we built the new building. So, you know, we've been here for, I'm gonna say, probably somewhere in the area of 50 years. The community's been around for over 60. We're all volunteers, and we're just looking to be better community members. So that's, you know, where we stand with this. As my friend says, we follow this back in April. I think there's an issue with the... You the building inspector?
That we...
Yeah. So it is. We're past... We're not past giving up on this. We've decided that... And it's a pretty... It's a sizable investment. For us, it's over 50,000 dollars. That's how serious we are. The size of the sign is very similar to what's there. It's not going any higher in the air. They're gonna remove the existing frame and posting that that is on. I believe we have to update the electrical. I don't think it's good to the standards of whatever they put that up 12, 13, 14 years ago. They're gonna put better quality lights, but it's all pipe, so there's no excavation. But the sign is the same. The framing will be updated with new framing. So it's much more soft. Yeah, did you not... Did you make a copy of this? This is what's existing, if I may?
Yes.
So there's our existing sign. This is the new one. It'll have a solid bottom on it, because the electronics are actually down behind here. And there's two boards. There's one on each side. So it'll be the same message on both sides. Existing is, I wanna say... But the new one is 6x9, 6x9x11. About 6 feet square. Which is very similar to what's there. It is a full color sign. Some people have seen the one at the high school. I think that's what they had the bug for, just a single color, or whatever that orangish thing. This is much more clear. Much easier to read. It will be easily recognizable, so that it'll be a quick glance. And also, it's gonna be quickly transparent.
What are you doing over there, Ken?
Looking at your sign, MyLAR. So I know that Kathy had submitted to the board documentation for, I guess, what was the building permit. In the zone, MyLAR does require a special permit through the planning board because of the illumination. Signs illuminated internally and in excess of 9 square feet are only permitted by a special permit issued by the planning board. So this would need to come to the planning board for a special permit, based on, I think...
The terms there, size and...
Size and illumination.
So, if I may, this sign... I can't tell you off the top of my head, but the size is very similarly... The contractor, which is each sign under strength of electric, or initial sign, said they'll be using probably the same holes when they dig this out and re-activate it. So the size of the sign is very similar to the existing sign. It's hard to see illumination. I reiterate that. Right now, we have, I'm gonna call them floodlights, but there's another technical name for them. They're higher voltage. They're very bright. And when they're on, it lights up a lot. This won't have... That illumination level is gonna go down, because you don't need that bright of a light, obviously, because it's internally lit. As a sign board, you don't need that much illumination. We're actually gonna change the wiring down to a lower effort, a 20 amp wiring. You know, they're really decent.
Did their existing sign gain special permits? Or was that before those times?
I can tell you that from my talking to some of my predecessors and prior members, when they went through the building, they followed every rule to the T. So if you did some research, I'm sure you're gonna find that you were properly permitted. There were no kind of... Every T was crossed, every I was dotted. So...
We were permitted, that is. That was involved with the governor's president back in the day. 2010, 12? I hate to say it. As much as I'm in favor of it, we're still gonna have to do a special permit. It's outside our...
We understood from my initial conversation with Kathy back in April, we're that. And that's what we're explaining. And what we're doing here. Obviously, it's more than, what, 9 square feet? And it's more than 10,000, but it...
Again, personally, I'm in favor of it. I think it doesn't just modernize what you're doing. It modernizes the town a little bit too. You're gonna have to fill out an application with the abutters, so you'll have to have a hearing.
Kathy, can you walk me through that if I don't speak of it today?
Absolutely.
The warning that... And who approves or disapproves of that special permit? Is that come out before you guys?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll be happy to do it. Like I said, we're looking to do this through the board, obviously.
I understand. You guys have made this...
Exactly.
You got a beautiful facility there. You try. Very nice down there.
And we put a lot into maintaining the property to making sure that it counts presentable. And not just...
It's noticeable. Just comparing the two photos here, it's definitely much more modernized and...
The gentleman that changes the sign at the AD one or two, and he is ecstatic that he'll be able to sit at home and change the sign with the name. He's like, "I go for my kitchen. I'll see my hand."
Yes. It's a nice looking structure.
The other good point of this is the agreement with the police department.
Sure. Yeah, we appreciate that.
The one we talked... I talked with Mark and I... He was my student at Cal, and I talked to him. The one that I talked with Mark about was when the bicyclist got hit on Bachelor Street, and they caught somebody, people by word of mouth. Like, to be able to put that on the sign and have that come off for a day or two, I can't imagine the deal. But there's... I think, if I'm... I'm not certain, but it took more than 3/4 of a million cars annually to go off down that street. The traffic count was unbelievable. And to be able to save a little bit for this... If you've seen it, please call police.
Sure.
So where do we go from here? I'll go back to Kathy.
Go back to Kathy.
That's a permanent application.
Correct.
And then we'll come back before you, the next chance we can...
Yep, they'll post it.
Okay. Do you know off the top of your head if there's a fee for the special permit application?
There is, because they have to notify the abutters. A mailing goes out. It's not a lot.
We're not worried about the fee. I just don't wanna go over the limit. So I'll go with... Probably go with somebody that can raise a check right there.
There you go.
To go bring the check, to the fee.
Yeah, and they're gonna ask you to go... You're gonna have to go to the assessor's office and get the abutters list. The assessor's office. Get the abutters list. She'll walk you through the process.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. The event fee has to show this week, and try and come in.
Thank you.
Okay. Got $125 maximum. That's gonna have to be a joint meeting. There's been some discussion about building another house on the same lot.
That's the thing that I'm curious about. You know, you've had joint meetings in the past for the garage, but it didn't have a living space. So this is a new use, typically called like an accessory dwelling unit. And I told Kathy my reservations in that I'm unsure if the intent to use that particular zoning use is the same thing. But apparently, she said the town attorney said to utilize that particular permitting mechanism. I don't know, you know, the whole story, but when she said that, I was like, "That's weird, because that's not typical." But when I thought of this, I said, "Well, this is a good opportunity to talk about accessory dwelling units, but I don't think that it should be permitted through that route." That's all.
Yeah. She was gonna reach out to the applicant and clarify what the actual application request was. There's a little gray area there, so...
I mean, the thing regarding accessory dwelling units is these are a lot... These are types of uses that a lot of communities are starting to look at and amend their bylaws to allow for in certain zones. And that way, you can create criteria that's very specific. This particular permitting mechanism, if this is the way, erases that opportunity to create the criteria. You're basically requiring, because it's over 1,200 square feet, which I don't know how big the living space would be, but then all of these types of uses might just end up coming in through that pathway. And I don't think that's the intent.
And that was the discussion. We didn't feel as though it was the intent of the bylaw allowing... allowing for this particular use. So we needed to clarify what the applicant's request was.
Yeah. So I don't know... You know, I know Kathy had shared with me a proposed draft of that public hearing notice. I don't know if that's a thing. Like, I don't know how far the board wants to move forward with this. I think that it's a bylaw amendment, to be honest, to allow for that use. But if the attorney is...
I'm open to the discussion on the change of the bylaw, given the fact that times are changing. You know, kids are trying to take care of their parents in their... elder years, so... And they're... The allowance of in-law apartments attached...
Yep.
versus a separate dwelling on the same lot. So it's... So I think we'll just wait to see what CBA has to say. And if we're gonna schedule a hearing for it.
Would you do it? I mean, is your intention to move forward with that particular hearing as it currently is drafted?
Well, see, it's kind of a... They don't wanna approve anything unless we say the site plan, it will work on the site plan. But it's really... It's really up to them to provide a zoning appeal, whether they're gonna allow it or not.
Well, I think the zoning enforcement officer also has a role in determining whether or not that's an allowed use in that is a particular pathway.
Well, he didn't feel as though it was. That's why they kicked it... He kicked it to ZBA. So that's... That's where it stands.
But yeah, I think...
I don't think there's any action for us to take on it at this point until CBA decides whether or not they're gonna allow the zoning change.
Okay. So then, with that particular meeting that I think has been put in the books for March 11, I'm unsure if... Because I think it is listed as a joint meeting.
It is.
So I don't know if your intention's just to hear and not act, or before that meeting, you know, decide...
Well, again, we're only site plan. We're not zoning.
Correct.
So if ZBA decides they want to allow it, then from a site plan perspective, we would look to see if there was any, you know, setbacks, water runoff, parking, how many driveways, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean...
Maybe we don't change zones here.
No, no. I understand that. If CBA says, "Yes, we're gonna allow it,"
then we can look at it and say, "Okay, it meets setbacks. It meets this, it meets that."
Yeah.
And if there's no input from the audience, the abutters, then we go from there. But if ZBA's not gonna allow it, we don't need to... There's no sense for us... The idea is, when we do these joint hearings, is that it's helpful for the applicant to get through the process. And, you know, will ZBA allow it with conditions? It's better to do it all at one hearing and work out any potential issues. And ZBA, and rightfully so, doesn't wanna approve something. "Oh, you're good to go." But the planning board says you're not because, you know, it meets setbacks. It's better to address everything in one hearing. All right, so it's... We'll wait until then. Next on the agenda, old business. Are we doing what our town report?
I'm still preparing it. I was just gonna send it to you. I mean, if it reflects previous reports, which say the board reviewed...
It's all about stats.
Special permits and site plan reviews. That's easy. And yeah, I've started to clear that. I don't have any financials, so I don't know if there is a necessity to put financials on there.
Anything we can disclose is good. I think it's... We're working within budget, for the most part, with what we bring in.
I mean, I can make a general comment, but I don't know if there needs to be any specific. And I can just leave it, like... You know, I can highlight, you know, if there's specific information that you think is required there.
Well, I think it's essential that we put the information in here as far as how many special permits. What we've done throughout the year, and seeing that it's due on the 21st. Memo Town Code Campaign Disclosure Report. And then the last thing is the... Which I accuse myself from as the discussion submitted as an department review for the Grandy City Board concerning the special permit for an earth removal. It's due on 1/19. So I don't know what you guys did with that, but...
We have a draft.
So we've got this... It's not a... It's an A&R, but it's not a formal... There's no MyLAR. But it looks like they're doing something here. This is the Roman Catholic Church. So it looks like you... I don't have to go from this to this, or from this to this? And over here... Now, Greg's is here. Does he own both pieces? Must. Yeah, I don't know what he's trying to do here. Not that it really matters to us. I mean, they're existing lots. They just shifted a couple lot lines here, but... There's nothing for us to act on. We don't have MyLAR to sign.
So it should just remain on the agenda for the next meeting?
What's that?
It should just remain on the agenda for next meeting. We'll just have Kathy work with the applicant to come in. Do you need to sign the document?
Okay, other than that, I think we've covered everything on the agenda for tonight. Anybody else have anything? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
We'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.